This is a recording of the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees. It is June 11th at 7:01 PM and we will do a roll call, so Lynn Blair.
Michael.
Tammy's on the phone.
Thank you. And Tracy Meswar, I think you might be muted, Tracy.
Oh, Tracy Meswar? Okay.
All right, we are good to go.
Yeah, six people, you have four. That's what I'm waiting to do.
Yeah, we have Tammy and Tracy on Zoom, so we've got four.
Yep.
Welcome Andrea, I'm so excited you're a trustee.
Yeah, me too.
All right, so shall we move to public comments?
Um, sorry.
Okay, so Bert Hansen from the Agricultural Commission was going to be here tonight, he couldn't make it. But he asked me to just remind the trustees that the Second Annual Open Farm Day is going to be Sunday, August 18th from 10 to 4. They extended the hours this year at the request of farmers and attendees. Many of the farms will be the same this year, but they're also adding Second Eden and the Grand Bell Scoop. And he asks you to save the date. And then as far as communication, just a reminder to everybody to check your mailboxes, Andrea, I can show you where that is. I requested a copy of the Trustee Trustee Pocket Guide for everybody, so there is a hard copy in your mailbox, along with other documents and stuff that comes in from the MBLC and stuff if you missed a meeting and whatnot, so. And then so we did another pop-up library, Andrea, we do pop-up libraries at the Southwick Village. We go there and we hang out in the cafe, we bring books to check out, we sign people up for cards. I did one last Wednesday, it was a big success, the busiest one we've had so far. I think I had almost 10 people stop by the table, which is really good, sometimes I only get like one or two, but we got like almost 10, which was great, we signed up some new cards, got some people interested in some new services. So I'm probably going to take a brief hiatus for the summer while we're busy with summer reading and then pick it up. I do it like once every other month and I'll start up again in the fall. We have two new museum passes, we have the Hancock Shaker Village and the Mark Twain House. So we decided to try some new museum passes to see what people want. It is, I was there a long time ago, but yeah, it's a really nice building, so we're hoping those new museum passes get some use. I am also working on marketing our new, we were able to sign up for, like we discussed last month, the genealogy resources, Fold Three for military research, newspapers.com and American Ancestors, really working on trying to get the word out, market. We had it out on our street sign, which people came in and they noticed and they said, we're so glad you've got that, so seems to be going really good, I've seen people using it on the computers. We're offering tutorials for anybody who wants someone on the hill. So ancestry, 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 Fold Three, newspapers.com and American Ancestors all can be accessed on our public computers. The only ones that can be accessed from home are Fold Three and newspapers.com, the other two don't allow at-home access. But they're very good resources and we're pretty excited for them. And then just a reminder, because this is our last meeting before summer reading opening day, it's June 29th, 10 to 12:30. So we will have a unicorn, we will have snacks, they'll be doing crafts for the kids, there'll be music. So we're hoping to have a great, we're hoping for good weather, the turnout always kind of depends on the weather, but we're hoping for good weather and a really good turnout for signing up for summer reading. And then also the town hall wanted to let everybody know Nicole Parker is the new Chief Administrative Officer. There's going to be a meet and greet with her on Monday, June 17th at the town hall in the auditorium from 8 to 10:30 in the morning. For anybody who's interested in attending. Right. Bye Jen. For the meeting record, we were just joined by Jen Velden.
Lynn, I'm sorry, can you repeat the date for the meeting again for the?
Yes, June 17th, which is this coming Monday.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And then that is all I have for communications, so I have the May minutes for everybody. If you want a copy, you can send those around. I also send them by email, so you guys should have them at home. Yes, I think I have that, do I have that later up here? Yes, I do. So these are the May minutes, let me know if you see any corrections or anything that needs editing.
Any corrections or adjustments?
Did I hear anything from Tracy or Tammy?
Tammy says aye.
Tracy says aye.
Thank you. Okay. And then I have four here. May statistics. Program information and I'm going to clear my screen for you guys, we can bring that up. All right. Hopefully you can see that Tracy and Tammy.
Thank you.
Yep.
And one of the statistics, you turn on like new, new data. Door numbers, it's the number of people coming through the front door. That's because of the state. How many people do you have for weeks of the month that you want to be fostering actually? The beginning of the library, the month of last, last year, 76,500 people come through the door. Or we know what are the numbers?
So I'd say we had a pretty good May, circulations are up, lots of new cards, good door count numbers, overall. Pretty good month. So the, we'll repeat that for you guys, the program numbers. I started doing the program numbers this month because I think it's helpful for you guys to see a snapshot of what we do each. You can get an idea of our program numbers and also all of the other ongoing things that we do, such as you know, the children's programs, the activities they have in there get quite a lot of use.
What's dramatic play?
So if you go in the community, not the community room, the children's room, Tammy, if you know right by the big window there where they have like a different like activity every month, like they had like the veterinarian at the end of last year, they had like the kids post office. So that area is just the play area that they switch out like.
Oh, okay.
I think they do it like quarterly, they, yep, yep.
So we're talking about, people ask them, do you have any programs for the other groups of world? So many have been, excellent programs, excellent people, excellent programs.
About numbers for the people that participate in the council. Yep, yep. Okay, so that's. It's the read at the end of our chat, you know, we don't record somebody coming in and then going. Yeah. Yep. Any other questions about the? All right, so if we move on to the old business, the summer page closed a couple of weeks ago. We completed interviews and then I put where they can hire for the select board. Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I don't have a kid. Her name is Mayer, she's hopefully going to be starting next week. She knows CWMR is already, she knows how to use the software or the catalog. So I think she'll have a really good transition, so Andrea, we hire a summer page, summer is our busiest season. So we hire a temporary person every summer to work for eight weeks to just kind of help us out through summer reading. No, she's not. But yeah, she's, she's worked at other local libraries, so she's very knowledgeable, so I'm very confident that she'll be able to jump in and then do a wonderful job. Can you take a hint? Yeah, from Western Mass, yep, yep. So not, not Southwick exactly, but from Western Mass. And then also in old business, we have, I mentioned briefly before, the info materials line, we are working on making sure that that's up to date, because as, as you'll find, as you work through all the fund budget stuff, you missed it this season, but like next year. Our mission requires us to spend 19% on our upgraded, what they call info material, books, audiobooks, movies. They'll also. Yep. Yep, as well as resources like ancestry and some of the other digital resources we have. Oh, I mean, if we like needed to like, yeah, bookshelves, tables, yep, yep, yeah, exactly. Yep, so we're required.
19% of that has to be in materials. Otherwise, the calculus will work and then materials bite out helping.
Yeah, and it's all based. Yep, it's all based on population size, so depending on population size falls, we have to be open a certain number of hours per week, including a certain number of evenings and or weekends. And it all varies depending on which category you fall in for the popular thing. Yep, so yeah, we're working on getting that down, we introduced our new resources, like I said, we're marketing those. So I think we are in a good shape. The expenditures are done, we're waiting for these two. Yep, yep.
It's just with the fiscal year ending soon.
All right. So I'm going to, everybody, annual survey results, if anybody wants a hard copy. I have, do I do, I think I did, I did print, there you go, that worked out. And I think they printed that upside down, but you get the idea. So and Tammy and Tracy, I emailed those out to you. I can scroll through them here if needed, if you wanted to see anything, but I think there's like quite a few pages. So these are the annual survey results, we got 95 responses. Generally. You know, there were, there were some good ideas, one that I will kind of discuss later, but yeah, I mean, essentially, you know, no, no surprises, I kind of think that we know the areas that we need to work on, so it's, it's helpful to see it actually in writing so that it's a confirmation that yes, we do need to focus on that. So I think, you know, I think the responses were generally really positive, we were able to kind of see what kind of programs people wanted, so we can plan for that for the upcoming year. What parts of the collection that need our attention. Any type of other resources people want. And then, you know, how great some of our, some of our services. I think it was also really helpful to throw in here, you know, what time you most likely to attend a program. So that obviously evenings are the most popular, but afternoons was the second most popular, so maybe I'm going to start trying some things in the afternoon. Saturday got the least, I didn't give Sunday as an option because we're not open. Saturday, out of the four, Saturday was the one that people voted for the least. So evenings was the most popular, afternoons was the second most popular, which surprised me, I always thought like, you know, maybe two or three o'clock in the afternoon. Not the best of time, but maybe we'll give it a whirl and see what happens, so. Yeah, so what I did, when we, when I put the survey out, what I do is obviously all copies here, I will send it out to all the people on our email lists, I also put it on Facebook, our Facebook page, but I all out to the Southwick Community Rooms on Facebook to try to get the people, you know, and whether they ignore it. You know, hopefully they pause for a minute and give their feedback. Yes. Yep.
And you kind of pull them out in the west field.
Yep, survey was, I sent something to Westfield, because I didn't realize it was published, so that was great. We put it at the town hall, I sent it to the senior center and I also sent some to the Southwick Village Cafe. About there. Generally, most responses I think that I get are from our email lists and Facebook, but I do try to make every attempt to, you know, we haven't done something like a mailing, which that could be a lot, that's a lot of postage, that's a lot of postage, but I know some other towns do that, but I don't know if, I don't know how that would go over with the postage cost.
Some towns like Grand World Gospel, some East Grand World Gospel. They have a monthly newsletter, which is mailed to every house in the town. And like all sorts of information at the auction rack in the school, in the clinical place, in the photographic place, the library, and stuff, etc. That's not the culture itself.
Yeah, so we do really find, I think people are really certain about it. You know, the last thing people want to do is fill out another survey. That's why I try to keep it short. Yeah. Yeah, we try to keep ours short and I change it up every year to try to focus on like the question where what time you'd be more likely to attend a program. Have more like smaller focused questions as opposed to just like being under the sun because people aren't going to pay attention to that.
And you're trying to balance, so you can look at this year's survey results compared to last year and years before. But some questions, you know, are relevant. Fashion objects, you say, trash. The reason you don't use the library is because you can't, out of the library is back on, you know, well, that's the problem, why you know, you have that.
I wonder if, as we have such great numbers coming in at the doors, if the next time that we do the survey, we could have something like right on the doors, so that like here is a QR code to go to the survey.
Yeah.
We will let you for having you.
We don't do that either, correct? Yeah, definitely. But yeah, we will be taking the results, kind of working them to our planning for this year. Any other questions or anything else, survey comments?
The QR code, this thing, and your phone.
We did do a QR code, yeah, we didn't put it on the door, we did a QR code, yeah. Yeah, yeah, we had a little mini handout with the QR. I think we used one of my summer meetings this year. Okay, so I will move on to this is just the hotspot policy, back in September when we back in September when we changed the library of things policy to make them to be able to be checked out by people outside of Southwick. Hotspots are included under the library of things, but I forgot to change the Southwick residents part of this policy. So I just need the trustees to vote to update that, that the hotspot is also for people from outside of Southwick.
Oh, so what do you want to borrow a hotspot?
Yes, yeah, technically they're kind of umbrellaed under the library of things, but I did not, I neglected to change the actual hotspot policy itself. Oh, absolutely, yeah, we got some new ones this year, we upgraded T-ball ones and we got like special 5G ones, so we have, we have, we used to have two, we have four now, they're very, very popular. Yep. So all I just need is if, if you approve to just vote to change the Southwick Public Library hotspot policy to say that it can be checked out, obviously people still have to be 18 up. So it says the library of things policy, but they do not have to be a Southwick.
Hi Tracy, are you going to accept this?
Tammy seconds.
So do we want to change the rank, say the hotspot, I have a lot of data for five hours? And then my other question is in the bottom one, it talks about, sorry, I.
Yes. Yeah. I think that was a yes from Tracy, a second from Tammy, and then.
And we want to go south.
Okay, perfect. And then, so there are a couple of things I just wanted to discuss as far as building slash library improvements. One of the things that the maintenance department realized, as you know, David Sutton is no longer in the town, Russ Anderson, who is the retired fire chief, is now filling in. Well, he noticed that we have bark mulch and you're not supposed to have bark mulch up to the door. So they are looking into getting stone, so that is something that's going to be happening, I think they're trying to figure out what we can do as far as the budget to make that happen, I think it was quoted about $6,000. No, but because apparently you're not to have news to me, bark mulch up to the Oh, yeah, yeah, it's, it's been here for as long as I can remember, yep.
Yeah.
It's a fire hazard. Okay. I think they were, the gist I got was that I believe they're going to do all of it, but I could be wrong, I think they're, they're still looking into it, getting ideas, quotes.
Over here, Hudson Drive is also a place where we are, how long it's been, they run because of the hollow oak.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, I know, Russ Anderson is, who's, who's covering for, for maintenance is looking into it. I'm also looking into upgrading, we did a big shelving project where we got a bunch of new end caps, which helped free up a lot of space. We finally finished shifting and moving things around, so everything is great, we have plenty of room. I'm looking into, I want to kind of use some of our state aid to update kind of some, some of our display spaces in the front, because I think it, it could use a little something. There's just a few things I'm going to talk about in there, so the front page there is just kind of what I was thinking of for the adult section to kind of create a nice display that's welcoming for people when they walk in. Obviously, none of this, we're nearing the end of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, so this is like a project for like summer, fall. But I was looking into doing maybe something like that, I also need to kind of update maybe some of the shelving nearby, I'm really trying to focus on now that we have all these great genealogy resources promoting our local history collections, I want to kind of update the display space over there as well. So I was looking at that for some more shelving. And I know you, you guys don't usually vote on state aid purchases, but I like to run it by you anytime, but I'm kind of looking at something that's a little bit on the pricier side. And also the next thing on here, again, something for the next fiscal year, but this was also one of the responses in the survey was that, somebody commented that all those workspaces over there, like near the magazine area, you come to work with your computer and you can't plug anything in. Back when the building was built, I don't think they anticipated people coming in with laptops, you know? Yeah, I mean, so, so, you know, when we put in the study copies in the side, I made sure those had plugs, like if you're working on the other side of the building, we have two rows of tables, but you can't plug anything in, so there's no plugs, there's plugs on the wall, but again, that's really, it's not helpful, so I'm going to kind of see what our options are, I mean, because you're going to have to run I'm gonna kind of see what our options are. I mean, because you're gonna have to run electricity there. It is, it is, so. Coming from above, I'm not an electrician, I don't know, it may be more expensive than it's worth. But I'm going to see if I can talk to somebody who will actually know what they're talking about when it comes to this kind of stuff and. See what we can do to kind of. Which is not exactly the nicest thing to look at, yeah. Yeah, so I, I was gonna talk to somebody who. That idea, if it's been just, if it's even worth trying to figure out if it's more expensive than it's worth. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I was. Something like, you know, a plan B might be like kind of like battery bank or something, I don't know what they call it, to just something. It would be nice to have something stationary, but again, you know, too costly isn't a good, or, you know. There are people who know more than me about this, so I. Um, but yeah, that was also an idea from, you know, the survey, was somebody mentioned that, and I was like, wow, I've never really thought of that, but. It's absolutely true, it doesn't, you know. Building was built. Like said, late nineties, they didn't, every. Top and smartphone and whatever and needing. Yeah, so that is something to look into for the next year. Um, the next thing in your little unpack out, pack out of stuff is, um. Last three pages, would have been more, made more sense to put the rusty stuff in the front, so you'd see what we're working. What we would like, but, um, you online, they may not be the best because they're black and white, but. We have, we have rust holes, it's, it's not a good look, um. The two on the right side of the door, I think are the oldest ones. And, you know, one of them's got like a good baseball sized rust hole in it, um. Yeah, I, I mean, I'm thinking we may have had these since. It will be the building opened, I'm not sure. It's a possibility. Yeah, they're, they're quite old, um, and then the other one on the left side of the door, it. As bad, it still has its fair share of rust, um, we're, we're running and starting to go, I think. Size, a couple of examples of. Just some new ones that we were looking at, so you can get an ID. Or, um, prices, um. I do think we place them, it makes no sense to like we have, we have two body visual ones right now, that doesn't make any sense, the second one's always empty. One on each side, media, um. They have nice ones that have like the two and the bed are there, we're just not going to have enough room for it. I would just say one on each side. Yeah, yeah, which in grand scheme of things is not too bad. Um, somebody recommended this company to me called Kingsley, um. Out of all the things that I look through that, that offer book drops, I like theirs the most, um, they, they seem to have. Really good customer service, um, you can customize a lot of the aspects of it. One of them has like a. An alert that can tell you drop is full, which I think is kind of maybe. Probably not something we need, something for bigger libraries, but it's, it's kind of cool. Yeah, so, so when looking through, when we use the, the M H E C contract for discounts, um. We use that through, um, through Demco is another vendor we ordered through as well. So the first page is the Kingsley options, which I like. I think Kingsley is all available through Demco and then you get the contract discount. However, what I don't like about some of these on Demco is that like. One of them does include the little cart for the inside, you have to order them separately. Does it make sense? If, so I think. If I were to order, instead of going through a second party, like ordering Kingsley through Demco, I'd rather just go through the main vendor themselves. That way I know that I can work one on one with them. Yeah, I think so. Yep, so the prices on here are what they have listed for now. Is, well, the two that are rusty on the right side of the door, those are just, they're not rusty, they're just not in good shape, um, the one and the other one. Again, it's, it's just getting rickety, so I think it's, because we can't see them. Oh, yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah, but I, I would say that it's, none of them are really in the best of, best of shape. So. Yeah, I can talk to Kingsley, I'll see what they can do, see if they accept any of the contracts that we work with to see if we can get a discount, um. But I'm, I was just showing you all the examples, the prices vary, but, um, if I'm going to order a specific product, I'd rather. Work directly with that vendor as opposed to going through a second party, because if something goes wrong. I'm go, well, yeah, they might help, but. Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt to add. Scroll up for those of you guys, um, um. These are different models. Once we get actually to, you know, the new fiscal hour space. But you can all of that, you know. Yes, yeah, absolutely. Yes, so one, one story for, um, Andrew, so. We meet all the requirements by the state, you know, we have to be, it's on our population size, spend. A certain percent of our materials, of your open a certain number of hours, um. All their, Paul's checking the door for when we close, um, so. So, um, we meet all the requirements through the state, and if we meet all of those requirements, we are considered certified, and if we're certified. We get awarded state aid each year. Us that we use for, um, the biggest contenders. There are things like the, the book drops, we order a lot of shelving, um, computer. Uh, because our budget doesn't include anything for computers, um, anything for, you know, furniture replacements, anything like that. Yep. Yep, so, so we just have to make sure we meet all those requirements so that we can get our state aid, because, you know, it's, it's a really big help for, for our building.
This is nothing, this is just. It looks like, like two of them are rusting on one side and standing on the bottom, it seems like there's a little water damage issue, so if. When you get the new ones, ask someone on the town, um. If, if it could go on a stand, it just like.
Yeah, absolutely. So, and then the last thing I just, um, I'm looking at, obviously in the new fiscal year, also using state aid. We have these laptops that we use for like. He's needing, we use them for like, and ours are. Starting to get a little bogged down because they're getting on the older side, so I was looking to maybe replace. One to two of our laptops for staff use. Yeah, so, so I was looking to upgrade. Ninety-five, you know, depending on the different specs, but. Yep, yeah. I'm looking to doing them, to getting, well, make sure that we have. Good operating. And then also from while, you know, eventuallators with our computer replacement schedule that need to be, um, placed as well, so. We'll be looking into that. You know, and we've been doing it on the lighter side, so I think we, we may have maybe four of us for this year that need to be updated. Um, and I realized in. Meant to talk about book drop, I went from the annual survey down to the hotspot policy and then the book drop, so I meant, um. Saying I have on here circulation librarian job posting, so if you may have noticed, we are advertising for our circulation librarian. Um, Susan Wagner is retiring. So, um, she'll be retiring, her last day will be July thirty-first, so, um. Probably just do Michael Bokey requirement get together for her, so. I'll send out any information. Yep, so, um, if you know anybody who may be interested. Then please pass the word along, um, the closing date is Monday at five P M. And then underneath that, the CPC project update, so if you were at the town meeting, the CPC project passed, um. So the next step is working with maintenance to kind of get the area prepped for outside, um. Unfortunately, what kind of happened with the project was that I'd been working with David Sutton. Who was the head of maintenance, but now he's no longer the head of maintenance, um. So, I haven't seen a job post of things, but. What we can do for the outside space, um, because he said that he would do all like. The work that needs to be done, you know, we would just get, obviously the materials that were part of the plan, um. But when he left, he didn't leave any notes on what he had planned, um, so I'm kind of working with Russ Anderson. To see what we can do for, I mean, the good news is, is I checked in with Sabrina, we have three years to complete the project, so it's not like it needs to happen tomorrow. So. Yep. So I just sent him the kind of dimensions for everything today, so we're just working on the size of the space we need. When ADA compliant, you know, because bark mulch, or. Either bark mulch is not, or certain types of bark mulch are not compliant, so they need to find, you know. What we can put down for the area, um, and then I think they, it sounds like they need to do a little tree trimming as well. Um, but that. Clean it, bring cleaning, so, yeah, so I mean, the practice is kind of underway, you know, we, we have. Plenty of time to figure things out and get things going, um, so. And then lastly on here, I just had, um. I'm just giving everybody a copy of our, um. Full of my fiscal year twenty twenty-five goals and. So that you can see what we have planned, um, or at least what my goals are for the next year. I will scroll down a little bit for you guys. Yes, soon, yep, yep. So on this document, um, you guys don't have to vote on anything, it's just kind of to update you, um, our fiscal, my fiscal year twenty twenty-four goals. And an end of year update, so where we worked on everything, and then also proposed goals for fiscal year twenty twenty-five. So that's kind of what we will be working on for the next year. That was everything that. So we just leave it as, um, no meeting in July or August unless there's something that comes up. No. I, I have many, um, I need to just kind of start getting the word out there more about them, because I did a big push when we got. And then you, you know what happens, you know, I really need to do another like big. To kind of get the word out there. Okay, so I guess we will leave it at that, there will be, um. No scheduled July or August meeting unless there is something urgent that comes up. Um, otherwise we can just have somebody make a motion to adjourn if we are done for the evening unless yeah, whatever the, uh, the second Tuesday is in September. I would yes. And then, um, was that a yes from either Tammy or Tracy?
Tammy says yes.
Tracy says yes. Have a good summer, everybody.
Thank you. And thank you, Tammy. Have a good